Good evening, welcome everyone who are with us in person and those who are live streaming and our community members in Avalon who are joining us this evening. So I will have our student board member lead us in the pledge.
And I will ask our board secretary to take a roll call and establish a quorum.
Board member Lopez?
Present.
Vice President Otto?
Here.
President Craighead?
Here.
Board member Dr. Benitez?
Here.
Board member Mr. Miller?
Here.
And student board member Ms. Nualla?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. The board has been meeting in closed session regarding matters listed on today's agenda. The board took action on the following items. On item 3.1, the board voted 5-0 to approve the expulsion of student ID number 201180419 and to end and to suspend the enforcement of the expulsion order pursuant to Education Code Section 48917 and provide an opportunity for the student to attend another school within the district. The student will be eligible to apply for readmission after June 11th, 2026. The board voted 5-0 to approve the expulsion of student ID number 201125003. The student will be eligible to apply for readmission after June 11th, 2026. On item 3.2, the board voted 5-0 to approve the terms of a compromise and release agreement regarding employee number E00102179. On item 3.5, the board voted 5-0 to approve a settlement agreement in OAH case number 2025060129 resolving all claims against the district. On item 3.6, the board voted 5-0 to approve a settlement agreement in workers' compensation case numbers 19753148, 18746690, 20808403, and 22880418 resolving all claims against the district. And on item 3.7, the board voted 5-0 to approve a settlement agreement in Azavius Oliver versus LBUSD case number 22STCV31775 resolving all claims against the district. And now we are at adoption of the agenda. And that's an action item. Um, no, I don't think, I don't think there are any amendments to the adoption or any changes.
Then I would move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? And our student board member with a preferential vote?
Aye.
Thank you. That passes 5-0 with a preferential vote. And now it is my pleasure to introduce our student representative, the vice president of ASB from Browning, Yasmin Abdul Hadi. Welcome. We look forward to hearing from you.
Good evening, Dr. Baker, LBUSD School Board of Education and everyone here tonight. My name is Yasmin Abdul Hadi, a senior at vice, a senior and vice president at, of ASB at Browning, Richard D. Browning Early College. At Browning, we've had a lot of, a lot of exciting events that have brought our community even closer. This past week, ASB hosted its annual fall festival. ASB hosted a rally in our gym for every grade to participate for a chance to win our Browning trophy. Each club contributed to our carnival theme by doing carnival-themed food and games, making our first festival of the year a success. It was our job to make every student feel included and that we didn't, oh, and that, and we did that successfully. In the end, we ended up bringing in $1,600 between ASB and all of our participating clubs. For our back-to-school night in September, Dr. O'Meara awarded our students with spring awards for the 2024-25 school year. Freshman students and their families were given a presentation on our LBCC courses and what were, what to expect during the upcoming school year. ASB participated in fundraising by selling hamburgers and hot dogs to families who attended back-to-school night. Students walked their parents around and were able to talk to teachers and find, find out about all the classes we offer here at Browning. Recently, our Bison Voice team led by Mr. Miyaki has been visiting the middle schools in our surrounding area, working to promote Browning in our hospitality pathway. We have been sending students who have previously attended those schools to help encourage students to join us here at Browning. Upcoming, we have site night where Browning students will be leading tours around our school to show off our culinary and hospitality pathway. We will show our future students our wellness center, industry and home kitchen, and our gym. Every year, we increase the amount of guests that attend and we continue to see each class of students grow. This year, we received over 100 students in our freshman class, each of them being enrolled in Long Beach City College dual enrollment program. We are happy to report that we expect 74 Bison seniors to graduate with their high school diploma, 42 of them graduating with their associate's degree in hospitality management from Long Beach City and City College, including myself. This allows us to enter college as a junior and leave, and leaves a lot more money in the pockets of our parents and guardians. Also, this year, we'll be continuing our LBUSD thematic sports team with Sato and McBride. We are currently in volleyball season. We will move on to basketball and soccer with hopes to add flag football and perhaps encourage Renaissance to join our league. Throughout our culinary courses, students have been invited to join CCAP, Careers in Culinary Arts Program, where students compete for chances to win scholarships through cooking. This month, students will be creating an original recipe using vanilla. They will head to LA Mission College where they will prepare and present their dishes to industry professionals. Our students are also preparing for their preliminary competition in January. We currently have 15 students participating. We are really hoping to take the judges by storm. Our, our students are going to show up and show out like we usually do. Thank you for all your support. We appreciate everything you do here to help us be the best campus we can be. Thank you, Dr. O'Meara, and for countless hours being our fearless leader and allowing me to speak this evening. In the words that are stated before every school day, be big, be bold, be brave, be Bison. Do your Bison best, go Bison.
Well, that was incredible, but I couldn't help notice maybe, Yasmin, that you didn't add personal things. And so I'm going to ask you what grade you're in, maybe, maybe what are some of your extracurricular activities, that type of thing?
Okay. Um, I am currently a senior at Browning. Since we are a small school, I do have a lot of officer roles at my school. I am currently running a class of 2026. That is what I do more than half of the time. Outside of school, I do, I'm a part of a swim team, yes, at Long Beach City College.
Wonderful, thank you. Usually we do a photo, Mr. Itzen, we're doing a photo. So we're going to ask you to come up here and, and take a picture with us. Wait, sorry? Oh, she's a junior, so I'm, I'm sorry. Oh, that is my poor hearing. Thank you for fixing that. Thank you, yes. I heard junior and, and that's on me. But you are a senior.
Yes.
And so we are, of course, very interested in what your plans are for next year.
Um, so for next year, I plan to be going to Prairie View A&amp;M College or University in Texas in, as a nursing major. Thanks to LBUSD, I visited, I went on an HBCU tour this past February and I visited the college and I really, I fell in love with the college, which is why I decided to apply.
You say you fell in love with the college. What about Prairie View did you like in particular? Just curious.
Um, it kind of reminded me of my own school how like, at Browning, we have a lot of Bison pride and at Prairie View, they have a lot of Panther pride. And I like that in a school, which is why I like that school a lot.
Well, I will tell you, we have a Prairie View alumni as a principal over at Washington. And so I know if Dr. Williams is listening, she is very excited to hear that there's another Prairie View attendee.
Fabulous. Well, thank you. And now I think we'll have, oh, wait, one more thing. Are there, are there people here you'd like to acknowledge?
Um, yes, actually, my counselor from Browning is here, Mr. Richardson, and my family is here as well. So I would like to thank them for coming and supporting me.
Fabulous. Okay, now we'll, now we'll take that break and do a picture. So come and join us. Always a joy to meet our students. And speaking of students, we have our student board member, Nualla, so we will hear from you.
Thank you, President Craighead. I actually wanted to talk about the Black Lit launch that happened, actually at Browning High School this past Monday, well, last week, Monday. We had the amazing opportunity of hosting Harvard professor Dr. Jarvis Givens, who launched our third year of Black Lit Society here in Long Beach Unified. We talked about his book, School Clothes, and the curriculum he developed for it, as well as the analytical tool, Spice. He was also here to launch our inquiry into Black Long Beach Project, which is the research project that Black Lits across LBUSD are taking part of to further inquire about our history as Black students here in Long Beach. So it was an amazing experience and it was lovely to see over 200 Black students from across the district come together and share their experiences and their lived, their lived experiences, as well as their thoughts and their views on, on our history. So it's wonderful to see there.
Thank you. And now we will go to recognitions and acknowledgements, and I believe we're going right back to you for an acknowledgement.
Yes, we are. Veterans Day. Veterans Day is a U.S. legal holiday dedicated to American veterans of all wars, and Veterans Day in 2023 will occur, 2025 will occur Saturday, November 11th. In 1918, on the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month, an armistice or temporary secession of hostiles was declared between the Allied Nations and Germany in World War I, then known as the Great War. Commemorated in many countries as Armistice Day, the following year, November 11th became a federal holiday in the United States in 1938. In the aftermath of World War II and the Korean War, Armistice Day became Veterans Day.
And, and we will be observing that holiday on Tuesday, so just a little less than a week. And now I will direct our attention to the monitors for a short video.
So sustainability at LBUSD is a plan and their efforts that we are making to be more responsible with our natural resources, making sure that we are protecting all of these resources that we use as a school district so that future students also have all of these wonderful environments, both at our school sites as well as our natural environments to enjoy in the future. The sustainability efforts at LBUSD are a key part of the strategic plan, Vision 2035. Strategy 9 of the strategic plan is broadly about sustainability and climate resilience in our district. There are three strategies within strategy 9, and one of them is the sustainability plan, which focuses on lowering our greenhouse gas emissions. So lowering our energy use, our water use, our waste, because all of that contributes to the district's carbon footprint and our greenhouse gas emissions. Another part of strategy 9 is behavior change. We want to create opportunities in our schools for our students, our teachers, our staff to be engaged with these sustainability efforts. And so how our students are doing things on their campuses is a key part of moving the strategy forward. And then the third piece of strategy 9 is about our Equitable Green Schools Initiative. And that is a way for the district to think about adding green spaces onto our campuses. We want to make sure that our students understand why we're being responsible with energy use, water use, our waste diversion, and we want them to get engaged with it. And so strategy 9 is about that, and embedding sustainability and climate resilience into our everyday on our school campuses.
I believe the backdrop for that video is our Camp Oaks, our YMCA Camp Oaks, Camp High Hill facility in the mountains are gorgeous, and it's wonderful to see how that's being utilized. Okay, so next on the agenda, we have public testimony for items listed on the agenda. Do we have anybody to speak on items listed on the agenda?
No, we do not have anyone listed on the agenda, um, public comments listed on the agenda.
Okay, then we will go to public testimony on items not listed on the agenda.
Our first speaker is Ms. Lakeisha.
My name is Lakeisha, and I want to first say thank you, Dr. Baker, and the entire board for allowing me to come and speak. I am here to speak on behalf of the parents of the Poly High School Athletic Football Program and the athletes themselves. I just want to start by saying it's an emotional roller coaster that we have been on since Thursday of last week. We had our senior night, big game, had a wonderful time to have the boys on the very next day, Friday, be told that the playoffs were pulled from them. And they were told in a meeting, which was supposed to be for practice, and the parents were not aware that this was going to happen, and they were hysterical, and so were the parents as we were called with the news. We don't have any answers. We can't get any answers. All we've been told is that the problem is bigger than transfers and CIF, you know, making us, or making the team, you know, withdraw certain games and, I'm sorry, it's very emotional. Just to say, we wanted, we would like to know if there is any other form of punishment that they can endure besides having the playoffs taken away from them, especially the seniors that have worked so hard within the program, have been playing football their entire lives to have this happen in their senior year. We're not getting clear answers, only them to say there's an investigation and it's beyond CIF, but they were forced to punish the boys and Principal Vega chose to basically pull the playoffs from them. And we were just appalled of how they decided to announce this and the boys have no support I have heard that a lot of the athletes, football athletes, they feel depressed walking onto campus, they don't really want to speak to anyone, they feel embarrassed, they feel it's their fault, and, and/or taking the fault for someone else, and they just don't understand why. And as parents, you know, they don't understand why is either. And that's pretty much why I'm here.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Natalia Lima.
I have that world's ugliest cry, by the way, so gotta get it together. Good evening, board members, superintendent, and community. My name is Natalia Lima, and I'm a proud parent of Demai Donahue, senior at Long Beach Poly, who plays varsity football, and a proud auntie to the entire varsity football team. I'm here tonight asking for your help to please reconsider and intervene in the decision to voluntarily withdraw our boys from the football team, from the CIF playoffs. This decision was devastated. This decision has devastated our kids, especially our seniors who have poured their hearts, time, and passion into this game the past four years and for many of their entire lives, or at least until they were able to walk. They earned their place in the playoffs. They showed up. They worked hard, and they believed they would finish what they started. But what's most upsetting is how this was handled. I met with Principal Dr. Vega earlier today, and he confirmed that the investigation had known about an investigation, he confirmed that the school had known about an investigation since early September. Yet none of us, not the players, not the families, were told anything until October 31st at 2:30 PM, when we were suddenly informed that the team was being withdrawn. Why were we kept in the dark for nearly two months about something that directly affects our kids' future and their mental health? If the school knew this was coming, why wait until the very end, after all their hard work, to just take it away? This wasn't just a missed game, it was a missed opportunity, a moment these boys will never get back. The lack of transparency has left families confused, students heartbroken, and our community divided. We're now, we're not asking for special treatment, we're asking for fairness, honesty, and accountability. Our kids deserve to understand what happened and why. Our parents deserve communication and respect. If there's any way for the district to step in and reverse our over, overrule this withdrawal, we are asking you to please do so. At the very least, we deserve answers. When did the school first know? Who made this decision? And why were families left out until it was too late? Our children look up to us to model integrity and leadership. Let's show them, when something is unfair, we speak up and do what's right. As someone who was born and raised in Long Beach, I still, I still believe this Long Beach Unified still, school district values its students.
I'm sorry, but your time is up. I'm asking for a, 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 please let them play. Thank you. Our next speaker is, sorry, our next speaker is Demai Donahue.
I'm an athlete of Long Beach Poly Football, and I just came here to tell you guys how important this is to me, because I feel that this is, uh, this is very messed up on how, how it happened and how it was going. I mean, for football, I know a lot of people know that this is some people's only ticket out. People started this since they were little and continued. And this playoff, I know for me, especially, this is my opportunity to get my name out there, free college. Like, I, I was trying to get my education out of this, but, I mean, it's, it's more than that. It's not even just me. My brothers over here were grinding every day, every day since summer, and just to get told that we can't play in the playoffs when we deserved our spot, we literally got our spot, and then now we're getting it taken away. Like, that doesn't make sense to me. And on top of that, like, me and my brothers, we really, we really put in work. I mean, we, our last game was against a bad, like, a not, it wasn't even a good team, it was Compton, it was my senior night. I was trying to, I was trying to get ready to go to playoffs. Like, this isn't just about football, this is about like, my future. And like, not everybody has it to pay for college, and I don't want my mom, like, paying for my college. And my brothers, I know a lot of them, I mean, we go to Poly, it's like, I mean, it's not like modern day or anything. Like, we really, we really like need this, this is our opportunity to get, make it out and like, and like, you know, you don't know how much we sacrificed to be here, like, like, we really gave up everything. Like, I missed a lot of time with my, my family, my, just a lot of people. I've normally at Poly, at Poly, at the beginning of the year, I was at Poly from 8 to 8. I get home, and I still have to do what I have to do because the real work continues. But I'm just saying, like, I put in too much time for this just to get canceled. Like, this isn't the right way to do it, and I just hope you guys understand that, you guys are able to make something happen, like, because I, I need to play football, you know, and there's 30 seniors on this football team. There's 30. That's almost a whole, that's basically a whole, that's more than a whole football team. We need this shot. That's not fair. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. I just, I just want to remind you that with items not listed on the agenda, we're not able to comment or, or engage in discussion, but just, just know that we are listening and we are hearing you.
Next is Anna Many.
Good evening, ladies and gents. I am a proud auntie of my great nephew over here, Demai Donahue. The issue that I have at hand is not only the way the 11th hour of the parents being notified, but the fact they were notified after the kids were notified, and I thought that was insensitive on the school's part. Secondary, I attended the meeting also with Principal Vega this eve, this afternoon, which led me to come to here and cancel my plans and come. The issue I have at hand is, is this an isolated incident or is this a global issue? You know, are the kids gonna still run into these problems at Poly High School when they go transfer to other sporting programs? Because if the, if it's an isolated incident, then CIF already has procedures in place to address those particular kids. And my understanding, there was about five students that had already been addressed where there's been sanctioned. The problem I have is that this is a self-imposed sanction that Poly High School did, but they could not outright say who was the one that made this decision? What was the trigger? It wasn't, obviously it was not CIF mandate. So since it wasn't a mandate, who internally decided? Who was this group? Who decided which group leaders were going to come together and make this decision? Is it premature that you guys made a decision to remove yourselves from the playoffs considering the investigation has not been concluded? And if it's not an isolated incident, isolated incident meaning CIF would have made a ruling on the students individually, that is a separate process. If it is a global issue with, that means it's staff. If it's staff, I asked the question point blank today to Principal Vega, how many employees have been placed on administrative leave? Whether employee contract, internal, external, I don't care, volunteer in relation to this matter? At a bare minimum, if they feel that the issue that's happening at Poly High School was so egregious, so elevated to the point that would warrant removing the football program from the playoffs, then why is it that I don't see heads rolling? Why is it that they were not able to tell me if they placed any staff on administrative leave pending the conclusion of the investigation? If it is not egregious enough or warranted to remove staff pending investigation, then was it warranted for you guys to prematurely remove the football program from the playoffs on the 11th hour? You guys knew since September that there was something in the forest going on over there. You could have given the parents an opportunity to transfer out their kids, especially if football is the program. And if it's not football, if it's a global issue of how Poly High School administrative staff operates, is it the individuals, is it the A.D.s? Is it the A.D.s who actually do the CIF portal paperwork? Or who is it, staff that receives the paperwork? What is it? The lack of transparency shines a unfavorable light on Poly High School and Long Beach Unified School District. So is this an issue or a global issue or is this an isolated incident in Poly High School? Or is this how Long Beach Unified School District operate? Because I am not digging any of this and you guys need to hold these employees accountable. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Samantha Sareth.
Good evening, Board. My name is Samantha. Sorry. I am a parent at Long Beach High School, Long Beach Poly High School. Thank you for allowing me to address you today. My comments are in regards to the decision for Long Beach Poly to self-impose against the CIF football playoffs. I have questions and concerns in regards to this matter. I feel like all we've been getting is the runaround when reaching out to both district employees and school staff. I spoke with Mr. Salas yesterday and when I brought this situation to his attention, he acted dumbfounded as if he, it was news to him. He went on, he went on to say that the ultimate decision fell on Dr. Vega. And that's why we need to speak to him in this regards. Another parent had a meeting with Mr. Vega and they asked him the same question. And he said that Mr. Salas is the one that's the liaison for CIF and made the ultimate decision. So at this point, we're, I'm just trying to get a better understanding of why there is a disconnect and why we are pointing fingers at this point because someone is not telling the truth. We should all be on one accord and it appears that they're just pointing fingers and placing blame and trying to wash their hands at this point. We as parents expect transparency since they are the people responsible for being the overseers at the school. Some of the questions that I have are, who was part of this decision-making? Because when we, it was addressed to Mr. Vega, he said he was the, um, quote unquote, upper, um, upper staff at the district level. He didn't mention who the names were. If it's possible, would we be able to find out who those names are so that we can directly have contact with them as well? Because I feel like we all need to have that opportunity to be able to express ourselves. How can we ensure that this situation does not happen again? What will happen to the students if this is not working in their favor? And what options will these students have for next year? And when should we have or expect to have a decision in this regard, to this investigation? We keep being told that it's bigger than what we thought. But it's not transparent to either the players or the families. As we're sitting here wondering what's going on. So, thank you.
Thank you. Um, next on the agenda, we have, uh, reports on superintendent advisory groups uh, for the Business Budget and Policy Development Group, Dr. Benitez.
Thank you, President Craighead. Although I was not able to meet with the superintendent advisory group, I did have a chance to be briefed by general counsel. And we went over a general approach to which policies need to be reviewed. Uh, we do have a lot of policies, uh, on the books. So, uh, we went over just strategically how we're going to prioritize which policies come back to the board, which policies need to get updated to be in compliance. And so, um, expect further information from our general counsel on next steps. Uh, but it is a priority item.
Thank you. And next we have Instruction and Student Learning Supports, Member Lopez.
Yes, we, uh, we met and we discussed the graduation requirement, high school graduation requirement for math. California Ed Code 51225.3 requires high school students, uh, to complete two courses in math or 20 credits in order to graduate. However, LBUSD Board Policy 6146.1 requires students to complete four courses or 40 credits in math in order to graduate. This policy does however include language for exceptions and waivers. Any parent who has concerns about their student taking or completing these four math courses is encouraged to meet with a high school counselor to discuss their options. So parents, if, um, if you meet with your child's counselor and, uh, the kids take three, the students take three years of math, they are still eligible to graduate. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Um, next we have Workforce Development, Member Miller.
Uh, yes, I have three key points that I'll be talking about today. Uh, the first one is the Teachers Residency Grant. So, Long Beach Teacher Residency is currently serving 18 residents from Cal State Long Beach who are preparing for multiple subject credentials paired with either the Education Specialist or Bilingual Authorization Credential. LBUSD and Cal State Long Beach partner to provide professional development for residents and mentors throughout the year that is aligned with the district's initiatives and characteristics of effective teaching. Oh, uh, I'm sorry, and the characteristics of effective teacher residency pro, programs. Uh, the second point is centered around evaluations. Uh, all probationary teachers' evaluations are due on February 6th and all special contract evaluations are due on March 20th. Evaluations are performance indicators that capture evidence of teaching, learning and social emotional growth in our system, uh, an important tool. And last, but definitely not least, uh, is an update on our annual recruitment fair. Obviously, this is a big event for us. And unfortunately, it will be paused this year. Any recruitment that is needed will be focused on high need areas only. So like special education, CTE, dual immersion, et cetera. With an emphasis on workforce, uh, diversity. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Um, would you repeat the, the specialty areas that we're looking at, please?
Yes, so, uh, there are a couple of high need areas, uh, for our system. And just some of the ones that were identified were, uh, special education, uh, CTE and dual immersion.
Great. Thank you, I, I just, um, I feel like that's worth repeating. We get that message out there that, um, those are our needs. Uh, next on the agenda, we have our Consent Calendar A.
Second.
Any discussion?
I do have a number of questions. Item 14.1 is the, um, the minutes for June, the two meetings in June. And we continue to receive meeting minutes for approval several months after meetings. Today's meetings are from five months ago and they're marked as draft. And I'd like, uh, for someone to clarify when we can expect to receive the remaining outstanding minutes and the final draft for June. And I brought this up, I've asked this a number of times and I've not been given a date. And, um, and we're, we're just looking back at five months. And I think it's, uh, it's time for us to, uh, bring all the other minutes and, and be current. I also, um, like on that, on the, on the minutes, on number 12, in the minutes, Tonya Uranga and Jerleene Tatum spoke against, against the board bylaws. It does specify that they were here to speak on board bylaws, but I want to also clarify that they were speaking aga, against the board bylaws. And then, since we are talking about minutes, in May, uh, we are supposed to vote, um, we're supposed to tell the public how the board, uh, voted in closed session. And, uh, when we voted in May 9th, I'm sorry, May 7th, on the layoffs for the classified staff, we didn't report how the board voted. And I think that it's important, um, that we also make that public. Yes, Mr. Real, you approached me and told me that we would be reporting that specific vote at a later time. And I can remind you, I was the only board member who voted no against the board bylaw. I'm sorry, against the, the layoffs.
I'm sorry, which, which meeting are you referring to?
May 7th. You approached me right before the meeting to tell me that that would not be reported that day and we have yet to report it out. So, and I'm gonna come right back to the, um, to the minutes. And, um, so I'd like to know when we're going to have, uh, the minutes for the meetings that we've had and, um, and if we can change also that draft to being the, the minutes.
The reason it's marked, I'm not sure.
And also, uh, include that Tonya Uranga and Jerleene Tatum were here to speak against the board bylaws.
The reason they're marked draft is because they haven't been approved by the board. So they're going to continue to be marked draft until the board approves them. That's that purpose.
And there will be no changes to them. If, if we approve them, uh, there's going to be no changes.
If, depending on the will of the board in terms of any, any, um, discussion about changing the minutes.
And when will we have the other?
As we were provided in an update, I think earlier or last week related to the minutes, we are clearing the ones through June, we're working diligently and anticipate to have a number of the ones coming forward at your next meeting. Um, we anticipate bringing as many as we can, not sure how many that's going to be, but we'll be starting to catch up at the next meeting.
And then if that correction could be made on number 12, that, um, so just to add that they were, those two speakers were here to speak against a, uh, board bylaws.
The correction would be up to the board.
Well, I'd like to see that on the, on the, on the minutes.
It's my understanding that the minutes don't capture what was said by everyone, but just the action that was taken. And if we state, um, details on what certain speakers say, then don't we have to state details for every speaker?
That, that's correct. What, what we've identified in the minutes is that the speakers, the general topic the speaker spoke on, um, not adding any additional information. And as you can see in these particular minutes, we've also included the video reference for each of those locations so that if anybody, a member of the public has a question or concern or wants to go, um, to review, it has a link, or not a link, but has a reference directly to the video, um, so that the actual, the actual speakers can be reviewed on the, on the video.
So there is a record of, um, what each speaker says because there's a video record of that. And that the minutes, we're not required to capture that type of detail in the minutes.
That's correct.
And I, I think we, it's clear that these meetings are being recorded, but like tonight, we had a number of parents speak about the situation at Poly. And it would be nice to have that documented in a sentence or two in our minutes. I think it just brings, uh, definitely more transparency, even though it's not required. But I think it's important so that, uh, you know, if, if someone is looking at our minutes, they don't have to necessarily go right back to those videos, which can be a little bit complicated to, uh, to, to, to try to figure out, okay, what was said and what context was, uh, the speaker talking about? So I think it would just facilitate folks wanting to know what was discussed in the meeting, see, viewing those minutes, uh, but I definitely understand these meetings are being recorded.
Dr. Benitez.
So just to clarify consistency here, Jeff. Our minutes are not by practice right now capturing whether folks are speaking against or for, uh, a particular item, but more what item they're speaking on?
That's correct, and that has been the practice.
Okay.
I do want to point out that that has been the practice, Mr. Real, since you've been on because prior to that, there was a little bit more when, um, our secretary, our former board secretary was taking the minutes, there was definitely a bit, a bit more detail in the minutes.
Okay, so how do we proceed with the, so it would, it would take a vote within the vote because right now we're voting on the consent calendar? So a vote on minutes would be a separate vote?
That, that's correct. What Ms. Lopez is asking is to amend the minutes as they're in draft form.
And we're not, uh, so I have other questions still on Consent Calendar A, so I suppose we can, that's, that's going to...
I, I think this issue is on the table, so we should probably address it.
Okay.
And we will. It's not going to stop discussion on that.
Okay, so how do we go forward with the minutes?
I don't oppose corrections, I just want to be clear on what our practice is and what our practice will be moving forward if this is a decision that we're making for these minutes.
Right, right.
As I indicated, we did provide a memo to the board related to minutes. And, and also, uh, because we are going to now be utilizing a lot of the video for direct links so that there can be a reference, our practice has been, um, to include in the minutes the general topic of discussion. Uh, and now we're going to also be including the video reference. So if there's any questions or if somebody wants to do that, they can go to the video and the reference.
Correct.
Okay.
So, so just to walk it back a little bit, when it comes to our board meeting minutes, we understand that that is a binding document, correct?
It is intended to, is intended, when you say binding document, it's intended to document the actions of the board. We also include some additional information in the minutes like who spoke and what the general topic was. But under the legal requirement for minutes is to document the actions taken by the board. In, in public comment, you're not taking any action.
Correct. And, and I think you've already answered my question. And so, though I understand and I appreciate, um, Maria's interest in the nuance, from a technical standpoint, the value of what the document is supposed to provide, capturing that nuance doesn't improve it. And so, for folks in the community who want to learn more about the topic that was discussed, like for example, folks who were, uh, talking about Poly, you have the opportunity to be informed by visiting the video. But to add that additional nuance, though I understand, uh, those sentiments, I don't know if it adds any additional value to the objectives of what the minutes are for.
And I can, I can respect that, that still, I, I, I think there, it's important for, uh, someone picking up minutes to, you know, and they're reading on, they're looking at the minutes to see, hey, okay, well this speaker came in and spoke... to see, hey, okay, well, this speaker came in and spoke against, or spoke about the board bylaws, or spoke about the sports program at Long Beach Poly. That's what it's going to say. It's not going to say, well, they were for the program, they were against the program. You know, I think a couple of sentences in there would definitely bring clarity to those looking and viewing those minutes. I definitely understand, again, that there's the video, but I think it just brings a little bit more transparency to the work we're doing.
Member Otto?
I mean, when I, when I heard the objection at the beginning of this, what I heard was two members of the public were against the bylaws. But my recollection, and it is back in June, was that they weren't against, neither one of those people was against the whole bylaws. They were against a particular bylaw, or a part of a bylaw, and I, we're moving away from the decision that we made, we've been asked to move away from the decision that we made, which was to do action minutes, so that these things wouldn't go on for an exorbitant period of time. We're having enough trouble getting them out as minutes themselves without making three or four pages of minutes into 20 pages of minutes. So, it interjects value judgments into what happened. What we're trying to do is what's called action minutes, which say, this is what was discussed, and these are the people that discussed it, and then there are opportunities to follow up on that. Otherwise, when you say, this person opposed it, this person opposed what? I mean, there were a lot of minutes that we discussed. So I think it's important that we don't go down that, that rabbit hole, and we, we have enough information for people to be able to, to know what happened at the meeting without getting into the details of who said what.
Yeah, and to be clear, since the very first meeting where the board, when the board bylaws were discussed in December 2024, every single speaker from that day moving forward that came to a board meeting to speak on board bylaws spoke against them. Now, to include the word against, it's just including a word against really on that sentence. That's, that's all I'm asking. I'm going to respect what my colleagues here decide and vote on. That's, that's what we, we do here, but that was just a suggestion. And I think we can move on. On item 14.8, the contract with TGA of Greater Long Beach to provide a golf enrichment program for students at elementary and K-8 schools. I think it's, it's great that our elementary and K-8 students will have the opportunity to participate in golf classes. But we just don't know which, are all of our students in all of our K-8 and elementary schools going to have the opportunity to participate, or what schools are part of this?
Can you give me the, is that one of the ELOP contracts?
Number four, number four on item 14.8. And then on that note, because my next one, number six, number eight, number nine, number 12, number 14, 17, 21, 23, 24, 26, 27, 30, 32, 33, 34, 35, and 37, also don't indicate which schools in elementary or K-8 are receiving the STEAM, digital production, dance, computers, physical fitness, theater arts, basketball, and music mentorship. And so my question is, is this going to be open for everyone in elementary and K-8 schools, or just schools? I think that having, clarifying which school sites will participate in these programs will help us understand the opportunities that are being distributed across the district.
So I can answer some of, I think, what you're asking. So you, you all as a board, about a month and a half ago, approved our expanded learning opportunities program plan. And in that plan, it laid out the budget. Part of our budget, the majority of our budget, we actually allocate resources and set up contracts like these with providers like the YMCA, Boys and Girls Club, and many of the you see here. And through that, then, we run approximately a $50 million program with, with providers all across our district. We also provide funds directly to sites, and those funds that are given directly to sites are for principals, parents, community, to determine what kind of providers they might want at their site. When we give the money to the sites and they choose their specific programs, you'll actually see a school name listed. And some, there are some in this agenda that have that. When we have the larger $50 million contracts, we do not list the individual schools receiving that, because it's part of our broader administration of the entire program. We have a list, that's part of our, our program, obviously, to have the list of schools that receive services. We don't have that listed here, because it's not part of this contract. These are broad district contracts that then we deploy across our sites. It would not be normal practice to have the individual sites here, because they're not for individual sites. They're to be deployed across the district.
Okay, in the past, we've had them. So this is the first, in the first time that, since I've been on the board, there have, we've not indicated the schools. But, but having, having said that, can the district put a list out on the website, so the parents know what schools are going to benefit from the, from golf, from, from STEAM, from digital production, from computers? Can, can that, can that happen? These are ELOP funds. So can the list go out, so that the public knows which schools are going to have which programs in place?
I'll have to, I'll have to think about how we have that. We do have these programs across our district, the schools where these programs are at, the parents do know, and students are able to sign up for them. I don't currently have a list of which of these programs are at which sites. But we can, we definitely have that. Our ELOP team does have that. They're deploying the program, which is their, the expectation that we have for them, that they would do so.
Okay. Also, contracts 39 and 40, with BPASA Consulting, the first contract for $40,000, and the second one for $346,000, totaling $386,000. They're to provide teacher and staffing support services to Educare and Head Start. And if someone could just elaborate on these contracts?
Yeah, so our programs, our Head Start and Educare programs are both licensed programs, and when teachers are, are working in licensed programs, they have to be permitted to do so. These two contracts are to supply or provide substitute teachers for both Educare and Head Start. And that is because our regular substitute teacher process that we use for TK through 12th grade, those folks have teaching credentials. They do not necessarily have the permits that allow them to substitute teach. So we need to work with agencies like BPASA to provide the substitute teachers for Educare and Head Start.
Okay, and then just one last one. Item 14.10, I just want to, to note that there isn't an ELD textbook or instructional materials for the elementary school level, and just want to make sure that that's reflected in, in the record. So, as I asked at the last meeting, how ELD was integrated, that is part of the reading program, but an ELD textbook we don't have. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. And then the last thing, yeah.
So we do have, as I've shared previously, we do have ELD curriculum. It is both in our Wonders curriculum and in our unit guides that we provide to teachers. And those are the resources that our teachers use to teach the ELD standards that are expected of them.
Right, to say, but for clarification, there isn't an ELD textbook at the elementary level. And I think we're ready to vote, unless there's other questions.
Are there any other questions or comments on the consent calendar? I would just like to take this opportunity to thank the 42 additional volunteers for the CAC. Well, Kabidi, thank you for volunteering your time to do that. So, oh, you have something else?
My, my comment was actually going to be quick. I was excited to see the grant from the, I think it was called the Apostle Foundation for the ROBO Bowl. And so, I had the pleasure of being part of the second leadership Long Beach cohort to put on the ROBO Bowl in partnership with the Long Beach Unified School District. And it took a lot of heavy lifting, a lot of collaboration with the district, obviously, but it took a lot of outside community resources to pull together the second annual ROBO Bowl. And so for the Apostle Foundation to come through with a $16,000 commitment to help keep not only, which I can almost consider a legacy project now for the district, as it's, what it's 12th year, 11th year or so, it's really, really cool. And so, not only am I happy to see that the district has continued to keep the ROBO Bowl, but that folks like the Apostle Foundation understand the importance of STEM education for our young people. So.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? In that case, I will ask our board secretary to take a roll call vote. Member Lopez?
I vote aye with the exception of 14.1.
Vice President Otto?
Aye.
President Craighead?
Aye.
Member Benitez?
Aye.
Member Miller?
Aye.
And student member, Ms. Noella?
Aye.
Thank you. So it sounds like that was a unanimous vote. Unanimous vote, 5-0 with a preferential vote. Thank you. And then next, we have item 15 on the agenda, consent calendar B.
Yes, I'll be abstaining from this vote.
Move to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any further abstentions? Our student board member?
Aye.
So that passes 4-0 with one abstention and a preferential vote. And now we move to new business, student outcome focused governance. Tonight, we'll be talking about board guardrails. So when we adopted our board goals and guardrails, those four guardrails were intended for the superintendent. And we started work on the board guardrails at a workshop October 1st, and these guardrails will be directing the board. And these are things that we will be using to help us focus, to prioritize our work. So I'm going to allow approximately one hour for this conversation. We're going to see if we can make progress in that hour, and we're going to see how far we get. Our, our coaching tells us that we need to choose at least one guardrail, but not more than five. And the list we have before us includes, well, the original list included 11, but then we have an amended list that includes 15. So that is the work we have before us, is trying to whittle down those 15 ideas to possibly, I'll say, three to five maximum. And so, we will use the following hour to see how far we can get on that work. So Dr. Benitez?
Madam Chair, I appreciate the intent to try to get some work done tonight in an hour. Just given that we originally were given 11 drafts, and then yesterday, and then as part of today's packet, we had four more additional drafts, I would just make the recommendation that we maybe establish a subcommittee of two of us that can then review, put some thoughts together, come back with, you know, some draft ideas, some of these on the front end, I think can be combined. I just worry about us wordsmithing tonight and spending an hour here, and it's, since it's not an action item, it's listed as an information item. Those are my thoughts, but I'm, I'm happy to entertain figuring out what we can do in an hour.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, not only do I agree with Dr. Benitez about that, but I, I spent a reasonable amount of time on what we got in a timely manner about the board guardrails. And I, I came away from it thinking, there are too many options here, and they're, they're too wordy, and this isn't what needs to be done. I'd like to know what other school districts are doing in terms of the number of guardrails and how they have these discussions. And so, I don't feel prepared, now that we've been given additional guardrails, to process that in and have a meaningful discussion about this. So I don't know about a committee. You know, we are under the problem of having a five-member board, so without scheduling special meetings, what we would have to do is limit it to two people. But I'd like to spend more time on this myself. So while I agree with Dr. Benitez, I wouldn't mind continuing this. I don't know that there's a deadline on this, but I want to study it a lot more myself.
Well, we don't have a, a deadline, per se, for the board guardrails, but let's see what member, the other members of the board are thinking. Member Miller?
I'm going to actually pose this back to Jeff. Would there be any issue with a, let's say, the board implementation, well, I'm sorry, what is our official title?
Implementation Timeline?
The Implementation Timeline cohort, taking this back and refining it and bringing it to the board?
Not from a Brown Act perspective, as long as it's under, as long, the board can create a subcommittee, and if it's under, under three, if it's two board members, then it doesn't have to be a noticed meeting. You can have those discussions, refine the work, and then bring it back to the board. That's permissible under the Brown Act.
Okay.
So what would your recommendation be?
I'd say, if it's okay with you, other member of our implementation plan cohort, for us to take this back and maybe find ways to work together to do some wordsmithing, to do some consolidation of taking it from 15 to a more manageable number.
So are you, are you saying a subcommittee of two, or are you saying?
Yeah, I'm suggesting a subcommittee.
Or you're saying a subcommittee of two?
Saying a subcommittee of two, and that subcommittee being the implementation team.
Oh, okay. And I'll volunteer myself to be one of those committee members. Okay, so, I'm sorry?
I think he's, he's suggesting that the committee be the existing committee?
Yes, that was my initial, but with, with, no, 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 with Maria's interest, I, I love to hear everyone's voice. So I'll, I'll bring back my suggestion. And now, I'll pose it right back to you, Jeff. So it would be like a committee underneath the committee? Is that, or am I, am I overthinking it? Or would it be just a separate committee?
Yeah, I think we, I think the subcommittee to look at the guardrails would be a separate committee from the Implementation Timeline Committee. So, separate committee. And so, Member Lopez, are, are you okay with putting a pause on tonight's discussion to take it to a subcommittee then?
And then we would have that discussion again? I mean, because, yeah, so, so long as we, we do discuss it publicly, yes.
Well, the subcommittee of two would bring back a recommendation that would, that would have whittled down the 15 to no less than one, but no more than five.
That's correct, yeah. Because at that time, those, those we would, we would discuss, yes.
Right.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, okay.
Madam Chair, can I just add one more nuance, since it, since it will no longer be the committee that?
The Implementation Timeline.
The Implementation Committee, and I'm good with that, if it's two other members. I would advise that Greg Klein and/or AJ or one of the coaches be a part of that group, so that they can continue advising the group, given that, that they've been the coaches for all the other.
Right, I think that would be a great idea. Okay.
And I just have an observation to make, and that is, this is the underbelly of the Brown Act. What the Brown Act does is limit our ability to discuss things more widely, because of the nature of the structure of our board, the number of members that we have. And it's unfortunate, because it, it means, makes the discussion unnecessarily long, because only two people can participate. So it's just, I, you know, I have felt for a long time that the Brown Act was, does some good things, but it also does some very bad things. And this is one of those examples. So, just an observation.
Well, I appreciate your opinion, but the, Well, I appreciate your opinion, but the Brown Act ensures that we do our work in the public eye. And that having a committee of two, in order to take a list of 15 items down to three to five, it doesn't create more work. It makes the work more efficient. And that conversation doesn't need to be public, but then the subsequent conversation, where those recommendations come forward to the board, will be handled in public. So I think it's a good protection for us, and it's transparency for the community.
I'm not suggesting that those comments be in the minutes.
Okay. So, so Member Lopez has volunteered, offered to be on that committee for the guardrails? Member Miller, you have an opinion?
No, I was assuming, oh, I wanted to go back to Jeff. So we would make a motion for the creation of a subcommittee and then would nominate two people, correct?
I think that'd be the appropriate way to do it for an ad hoc committee.
Okay. And so, to that, then I would like to make a motion for the creation of the Long Beach Board Guardrails Subcommittee, and I would like to nominate both Maria Isabel Lopez and our board president, Diana Craighead.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
The one thing that I want to be clear about in regards to what the objective is of the subcommittee is, as we sit here with 15 proposed board guardrails for consideration, the goal is to reduce it down to a manageable number for us to make a formal decision. So as long as we can agree that that's the objective, I look forward to seeing what comes about.
And have a report back date?
That's a great point. We did not make this a smart committee in regards to giving it a firm report back date here. What do you think the estimated time period should be, 30 days?
After the holidays.
Jeez.
What is remarks in the minutes?
We don't think a month is enough?
Yeah, I was going to say, 30 days doesn't sound manageable.
First meeting in December?
Well, there's a holiday.
And in 30 days, I think we only have, wait, no, do we have two meetings in December? We do have two meetings in December, okay. Yeah, I am confident that 30 days should be sufficient, but I'm not the person on the committee, so I don't want to speak for you all. Does that feel comfortable?
I think so, and if not, then we can definitely keep you posted. Yeah, but I think it should be fine.
Yeah, agreed.
Okay, so would you like to restate that motion?
Yes, so I would like to make a motion for the creation of the Long Beach Board Guardrails Subcommittee with two members, both Maria Isabel Lopez and board president Diana Craighead, with the goal of consolidating our 15 considerations down to five potentials with an explanation to maybe some of the conversations that occurred behind the scenes, but all things considered, with a timeline of reporting back to the board within 30 days, or by the first meeting in December.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Student board member Noala?
Aye.
So that passes 5-0 with a preferential vote. And I will mention that according to Bylaw 9025 regarding committees, this is a board-created committee. So everything listed in that bylaw would take effect, and that's Bylaw 9025. Yeah, 9025. It's a board-created committee, just to remind everyone. Okay, so that's, that's how we're handling that discussion of board guardrails. So we will move on to item 16.2, Student Outcome-Focused Governance Implementation Timeline. And I will hand things over to board member Otto, who will tell us about the upcoming community engagement planned for January.
So my district is the district that is planning the public meeting in January, and we have outreach to Rancho Los Alameda as the site for that meeting. I met yesterday with them, with my wife, who used to work there and knows the new leadership that's come on board in the last six months or so. They're very excited about working with us. We suggested either the 21st, or the 26th, or the 27th of January, which were the dates that we worked out with the district as possible dates. And I told them my preference was the 27th. Those, none of those are board meeting dates, but the reason for that is I'm trying to get it as far away from the Christmas holidays as possible, so people get back in the mindset of actually talking about the things that we intend to talk about in the second meeting. I've also made contact with the council member from the 3rd District, who is very interested in what we're going to do. I've got a call into the council member for the 4th District, who is also in that area or in my area, and I think he will be supportive as well. We're trying to get the numbers of all the leadership and the PTA in those areas, as well as the neighborhood groups from those two council people, so we can talk about what it is that we will talk about and have a very good discussion along what it is that we're supposed to do with this committee work. Since the Student Outcomes Focused Governance is based on what the community wants, it's very important that we get as many members of the community as possible there to give us their ideas of what they want. I know that's hard. Dr. Benitez and I, a couple of years ago, had a meeting at, and we had, I mean, 25 people show up, and we thought, this is great, we'll have another meeting. And a few weeks later, we had another meeting, and 20 people showed up, but 15 or 18 of them were the people that had been at the previous meeting, and I thought, this is going the wrong way. We've got, at that point, 65,000 students in the district, and we needed a broader thing. So we're very sensitive about getting as many people and as many opinions as possible, and we think there are good ways to do that. We've talked about the use of social media in terms of getting people there. We've talked about the things that I've already mentioned, about getting the neighborhood groups informed, getting the PTAs informed, and trying to communicate so that we get a good turnout. We think the Rancho is a very interesting place that people like to visit. There's parking, and we're talking about an evening meeting, probably somewhere between 6:30 and 8:00. All the details are to be worked out, and we're working on that, and we expect to have a confirmed date by tomorrow. And then it becomes a question of putting this together, and I'm working with our staff here to try and make this a very successful meeting. So that's where we are.
Thank you. And a question that came up when we were planning the first community engagement meeting was, why did we choose a venue that was not one of our schools? And so I just want to kind of mention that you are choosing a venue that's not one of our schools, as well as I did, because we are, according to our strategic plan, focusing on the community and working with the community, and we have so many community partners, it's wonderful to be able to work with them, have them help us, have them learn about what we're doing, and that type of thing. So we could very easily use one of our school sites for these community engagement meetings, but we're enjoying being out and about in the community and involving our community partners.
Yeah. Can I piggyback on Doug's statement just for a second here? Because I think that it's important that we are transparent and accountable for our, what I would consider, and I think that my colleagues would agree, our underperformance of being able to do community outreach. I think that we all understand that we would like a better turnout from both parents within our system, students within our system, but also just folks from our neighborhoods that we represent. And so with our first event, we knew that it was going to be a continued practice to create the culture. And so as we continue to tweak and get creative on how we can engage new community partners like the Rancho or the Long Beach Assistance League, I just will also ask for continued grace and support from any community member that's listening, knowing that we are working, we want better representation. So please, along with your criticism, we're asking for your support in this process. And so if there's any way that you can further support us in getting more representation from our community, please, please provide information on how we can do so.
Thank you for mentioning that, and that's one of the reasons I am glad, Member Otto, that you mentioned all your efforts in getting community people involved and getting the word out, and I think that's going to be a wonderful effort. Also, before we leave this particular item on the agenda, we have a monitoring report at our next meeting. Today, we've been given our materials, we've been given the monitoring report. There is a deadline to have questions submitted ahead of time so that we can have a more robust conversation on November 19th. So I would just encourage my colleagues to submit at least one question by the deadline so that we can have a more effective discussion November 19th. And now we will move on to Agenda Item 16.3, Resolution 110525-B, The Long Beach College Promise. And I would just like to mention that we did receive a letter from the new CSULB president, Andrew Jones, and he mentioned being a longtime Long Beach resident and a tremendous fan of the Long Beach College Promise. And so this resolution is really an invitation to work with us, to get back to the original intent of the college promise, and to, for me, to, when we talk about the college promise, to know what we're promising exactly, and to be able to, be able to express that promise and be genuine in that. Dr. Benitez?
Yeah, just to add, Madam President, I see this resolution as a value statement, just affirming for our district, for our students and families and caregivers, that we want all students to be successful, just like our institutional partners want, and that we want all students to have the opportunity to go to college. That's it. And so I think the resolution provides some guidance and direction for our superintendent. As a good partner, we know that we don't unilaterally make decisions of this kind, so it's an opportunity for us to fulfill the spirit and the intent of this Long Beach College Promise, and for our superintendent to receive some guidance and directions from us to engage with our institutional partners.
I think, given that we did receive a letter from the president of CSULB, I think it's great that we move in this direction, but the president's also asking us, or is telling us he has concerns that the resolution comes with that prior consultation with CSULB. And I think that we should give it a pause, as is being recommended, so that the dialogue can happen, so that when we do move forward, hopefully, with the resolution, we have our partners on board with us. Because the letter he did send is very clear that he would like it, he would like to discuss it before we move forward. He feels that there was no consultation with them, and I think we should put it on a pause until there's the dialogue. Superintendent speaks with the president of CSULB.
Thank you. Our student board member's been waiting.
Absolutely.
I just simply wanted to affirm how beautiful this is, because our Long Beach College Promise is very explicit in what it says to our students. And so to put this into writing and actually continue what we did promise and deliver on what we've promised would be amazing and provide a lot of clarity for our seniors, who I know a lot of are progressing within this pathway. So to provide that clarity would be amazing.
Thank you. Member Otto?
So one of the reasons I think that this has become a hotter topic than it has in the last couple of years is because there's been this movement to do direct admissions, which basically is that, hey, if you meet the requirements for the CSUs or the UCs, as outlined, we've got, we know what those are, that you get admitted, and that you then get to go there to school. And what we learned is that, as much as we have partners that we can work with, they can't, they have told us they can't accommodate everybody that could do that. And so we've had to fine tune the college promise, or maybe not fine tune it, but not be able to implement it the way that we wanted to. And so this is, this direct admissions idea, which is getting a lot of play, is, provides additional vigor to this conversation. And I think it's very important to include the CSUs, and in particular, Cal State Long Beach, in this discussion. I agree with Maria that we need to do that, and to move forward with this, because it's a very, very important topic to all of us. I know that we want our students to get into the CSUs and the UCs and to work with them to do that, and we don't want to antagonize Cal State, Long Beach, or any of the institutions of higher education in any way that we keep them from fully cooperating with us to get our students in and graduated eventually. And I respect the efforts that have been put into this so far since our last meeting, but I'm going to vote against the resolution as it's presently presented, not because I disagree with the ideas in it, but because I think it needs to be done more collaboratively, and I think it will be all to our benefit, and we can also do that pretty quickly.
Just a point of clarification, Dr. Baker. I think there may be this presumption that we haven't engaged and we haven't had conversations. My understanding is, not just in the last two weeks, that you reached out to our partner institutions to, you know, share what our thoughts were, but that in the last several years, this is not a new conversation, it's not really catching anyone off guard. We've invited our partners to come and make presentations to us, to update us. So I think this narrative that may be out there around that we haven't collaborated and that we've acted unilaterally, I'm wondering if you can just comment on that?
I can definitely speak to really good collaboration across institutions. With Dr. Connolly's departure, I haven't met with President Jones to this point, but I fully expect that collaboration to continue. That's been multiple years of collaboration. So I think the values...
So, I think the values that, as has been said, and actually by Student Board Member Nwala, represent what we want for students, as you have presented in the resolution. But no question that we have had a very collaborative relationship across Long Beach City College. They have made significant shifts in their programming and supports to students. Cal State Long Beach has tried a small program that has served 54 students in the last couple of years, increasing the supports that those students get upon entry, which is a different approach to even thinking about admission. And for those 54 students, there has been a slightly different criteria that is representative of a different criteria. So, there has been tremendous collaboration. This, I don't anticipate that your statement of values and however you do it through this discussion, through directing, may, will change any of that collaboration. And the, and the criteria hasn't changed, though, so let me be clear to what you asked. So, what is written here is factual in terms of, right now, there is not, the, the original criteria for the college promise does not exist. So, with our collaborative efforts, that still hasn't changed, just to be factual.
So, if you know me, you know I am about educating students and getting them to, to college. So, but just like Mr. Otto, my, my vote will also reflect the letter that we have. And I want to read it to the public because I think it's important. And this is to the board members. I write today regarding the resolution following the passage of SB 640.
If that letter, was that letter written to be public? Was that submitted to be a public letter? Because I don't know that the author of that letter would like it to be written, read in public.
Very good. So, so I will just say that the President is asking us to, to put a pause, is asking us to, to defer discussion and action. And, and I think that we should be working together with our partners, and my, my vote will reflect that I think we should honor what the President is asking.
I believe we're ready for the vote, so I will ask our Board Secretary to take a roll call vote.
Well, Madam Chair, I think there, we need a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we had a motion on the floor.
But, given that the contents of a letter that I didn't know was a public comment have been shared, I think we need to take that into account now because I wasn't aware that this was a public comment letter. Dr. Baker, I don't know who, who originally, I got it in a board packet today.
Yeah, the Cal State Long Beach submitted a letter directly to you all. That's what I can say.
Not as a public comment, correct?
Right, not as public comment.
Yeah.
And so, again, my, my concern now is that we've shared contents of a letter that was meant for us, and we're using that as a basis for a public vote.
So, is it your recommendation that we pause a vote on this item?
I do. I mean, and, and again, Mr. Real, if, I, I just don't know how we can have a vote and/or an authentic transparent discussion without being able to refer to contents of a letter that have already been shared.
Okay, so we will pause this and move on to the next item on the agenda.
Legal, since we hold public office, isn't this public? Couldn't, are these letters public, since we are, I just, that is a question.
If there was a public record request and the letter came in, it would be, it would be divulged as a public record, wouldn't be exempt from dis却. If that's the question.
What about the reading of the letter, Jeff?
The, the reading of the letter, well, the letter came in, the request was related to making a public comment. And the letter came in because there wasn't going to be a public comment, so they wanted to make sure that the board had the contents of the letter. That's my understanding.
Okay.
I was just going to say regardless of a vote on the resolution itself, I'm happy to take direction from the board in terms of the values that have been stated and to work directly with the partners that include the City of Long Beach, Long Beach City College, and CSULB in the meantime.
I, I think my bigger concern here is that we received the letter today, directed to the board, and that we're revealing the contents of the letter without getting to the specifics of the letter and, and then making a decision on something. And, and I think either we reveal the contents of the letter, if there's no legal cover for that, and/or we postpone our vote because then the public is left with, well, what was in this letter that's got two board members voting no publicly on it? And, and some of us didn't reveal the contents of the letter. Again, we're just receiving this letter in our board packets today. And, and again, it puts us in this position where we're taking action on an item without revealing the full contents of a letter that was submitted that two colleagues have referenced and are now telling the public that they're going to vote no because of the contents of this letter.
But, isn't it because we received it, it becomes public records?
There are two different questions going on, but there's, there's no legal restriction for, there's no legal restriction from reading that letter or providing the contents of the letter. It was intended, as I understand it, to be, to be given to the board. I don't, yeah. So, there's no legal restriction from reading the contents of the letter.
So, why don't we, I mean, I, I announced that I would vote against a resolution if there was a motion, but there is no motion. And my suggestion is that we don't have to take an action. And so, what we ought to do is further consider this and bring it back. If we have to bring it anywhere at all.
I think that's a, a good recommendation. I don't feel comfortable with us reading letters publicly out loud that we receive. It sets a dangerous precedent. It means that whatever letter we receive can be read in public. And I don't think the authors of the letters intend for that to happen. I don't think it's a good practice. And that's where I stand on that, and that's my opinion. But it seems to me that...
My motion was to postpone an action tonight.
Okay, and that's why I was moving on with, with the agenda.
Yeah. So, I, I did want to provide a little bit of clarity, at least to my thought process here. When it comes to being a representative of the Long Beach Unified School District and being on the Board of Education, we understand that when we sit here, there are going to be times where we will make a decision that won't be, that doesn't need full consensus. We know that sometimes it, we will, we will have potential votes that go 4-1 or 3-2. For me, obviously, from a solidarity standpoint, I would love for every, well, for our votes to be as, consensus, to have solidarity as much as possible so that we're all on the same page. But that's not a requirement of, of this position. All things considered, there are certain values that as a district and as a board in particular, that we vote on, that I think are important for us to have full solidarity. And the work and the principles in which our Long Beach Promise represents, to me, is one of them. And so, to hear that we potentially wouldn't have solidarity due to language that is in this resolution, though my vote would have been to move forward, I understand that if there are additional questions, additional language, additional changes that need to be made to the resolution by my fellow colleagues, therefore, potentially changing the vote so that we wouldn't have solidarity, then I too would probably be in the likes of wanting to pull the item until we have full consensus.
Yeah, and I just also want to say that I took this as a, the President couldn't be here to make, give public comment, and this was part of public comment.
So, I believe we're ready to move on. We are not voting on the resolution. Put a pause on that.
Yes, we're not.
And, no. And we're going to move on to report of board members and announcements.
All right. So, hard turn, but I will turn the corner here. So, there's a couple of things that I wanted to bring up. One is where I'm going to actually go to Jeff on something. As I was having a conversation with Board Member Nwala about her interest in being a part of the Board Guardrails Committee. Unfortunately, the vote had already been passed and approved, but she has interest in being in support. Honestly, I could see the value in that as there is one guardrail in particular that actually talks about her role, right? And persuading student board members in regards to having a comment. So, having a student's input on our guardrails doesn't come across as an issue to me, but unfortunately, because we've already passed the vote on the creation of the subcommittee, I wanted to get your thoughts on that.
Well, if your question is whether, if you can clarify, is your question whether the board member, or excuse me, Student Board Member Nwala can participate in the ad hoc committee?
Correct.
To the development.
Correct.
I, I think that from a Brown Act perspective, the, because the board members, Student Board Member is a preferential vote, that it's, when we're looking at the Brown Act, it's really the five members of the elected members that, that we need to address on, in terms of concerns about the Brand Act. If you have a two-person subcommittee, ad hoc subcommittee, I believe that there would be no restriction from having the Student Board Member also participate in that committee.
Okay, and do we have to formalize that? Or is there something, okay, great. So, I think that answered our question and conversation. Great. Once again, I think that that will be important for us as, obviously, as we want to represent the guardrails of our district, having a student's perspective in that space, I think only provides additional value. Okay.
I, I do need to amend, I apologize. I don't think you need to re-vote, I just make sure you have a consensus among the five board members to include.
Oh.
Yeah.
Do what?
Doesn't need to be a formal vote, I just don't know, absent any, any objections, I think that you can do that, I just didn't know.
I don't know what I would be objecting to.
Well, we're, we're talking about having the Student Board Member on the ad hoc committee of two to work on the board guardrails. And there's no legal restriction for having the Student Board Member work with that committee.
Well, I mean, that, that brings me back to my thought about the proposed guardrail with regard to the, remember, I thought it was suggesting that she wasn't a full member of the board, she was just a student member of the board, so it doesn't matter. And that's why I wouldn't have, wouldn't have approved or wanted to approve that guardrail because I think she's a full member of the board or should be considered that way, and we shouldn't, we shouldn't treat her any differently. And I thought it was a lousy idea for a guardrail. And so, but, but as long as, I, I mean, Jeff, you tell us legally whether adding a student member to the committee of two would violate the Brown Act.
No, I don't believe it will. I think the issue is the five elected members. The issue that I, I think I'm bringing up is I just want to make sure...
Make sure we have consensus, correct. So, if we're, so if, and potentially when Board Member Nwala adds to the conversation, are we all in agreement that she can participate in the, in the conversation? I don't, I personally think that it only brings an added value.
Absolutely, I think her voice matters. And so, yes, I think we should move forward with having her join us and participate and give us feedback, too.
Great.
Great.
Yes, I agree.
Thank you, Jeff.
Apologize for the confusion.
No, 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 I, I think that you were spot on in making sure that we had clarification on that piece. So, there are two things that are coming up in our city. One that I thought was pretty exciting in my district as Roosevelt's Sancofa Fridays coming up. It is on November 14th, it'll be their first meeting, and I know that they're really, really excited, and I'm excited for them. And so, I had a long conversation with, with Marcia Miller, and so she was sharing with me of all the work that they've put forth in creating the Sancofa space for their students and parents. And so, I look forward to being there and being in support. And so, I would be remiss if I didn't also share that, that opportunity is available on November 14th. And then, there's another event happening, which is titled the Libre Community Night. It is on November 13th. For those that are unfamiliar with the organization Libre, it stands for Long Beach Residents Empowered. This organization, I have been in connection with Libre for at least the past eight to 10 years now, but they have been fighting for residents and fighting for housing rights in our city. And I am in so much support for them because I know and have seen firsthand the issues that have been happening with housing insecurity. The folks that they continue to fight for are our students, are our parents. And so, with their community night coming up on November 13th at Shannon's at the Top, I'm just wanted to share that opportunity for anybody who is interested and wanted to be in support as, once again, the folks that they are fighting for are not only just residents of Long Beach, but more often than not, they are parents and students within our district. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. Member Otto?
I have no report tonight.
Thank you. Member Lopez?
I'll be super brief. I'd just like to begin by acknowledging Cory Morris, who was here at the last board meeting to inform us that he was a first Black Student Board Member. And Cory, you absolutely deserve to be recognized as a first Black Student Board Member, and I just want to apologize for the oversight in not acknowledging you sooner. Thank you for your service on the board, and I doubt that the school district benefited greatly from your contributions. I also want to congratulate Mr. Chris Steinhouser, who was honored last week by the Ronald McDonald's House for his outstanding work in education. Mr. Steinhouser was our former superintendent and played a key role in the 2008 College Promise, which guaranteed all LBUSD students who successfully completed the A through G requirement would be admitted to Cal State Long Beach. Congratulations, Mr. Steinhouser, the recognition was well deserved. And then, just finally, I'd like to close with the moment of silence in memory of Mark Ian Eglund, a former Jordan student and son of Mr. Marcus Eglund, who is one of our school safety officers. Thank you.
Thank you. I will start by saying that I attended the trunk or treat event at McBride High School, and they invited the community and neighbors. There were costume contests for the littles, a separate contest for the older students, very fun, wonderful event. Thank you for everybody who helped put that on. Also, the Partners and Pathways Event at the Marriott a couple of weeks back. And this effort aligns with the theme of our strategic plan, creating a better future together in and with community. And a little quote by Keihao Fujikami, "The event was to showcase the impact of partnership." And it was a very well-attended event. As I looked around the room, I saw our business partners, I saw students, I saw principals, and the, the business partners were very excited, not just to be involved, but to think of other ways that they could increase their involvement. And that was very fun. We had students from McBride, Cabrillo, Jordan, Wilson, and Lakewood, and they talked about their personal stories with internship, internships, and how those experiences helped to build their future. And they made presentations to our business partners. And it was a real stroke of genius to have the students make the And it was a real stroke of genius to have the students make the presentations, because as they told their story, you could see everybody listening intently. So thank you to everyone who made that event possible. It was a very good one. And the College and Career Expo at Long Beach Arena, and I, at the, right? Yeah, that, that was fun. At the Partners and Pathways Event, I met a mother-daughter duo who had an idea for this, this particular College and Career Expo, even though we've, the, the district's done that before, I'm aware. But this mother and daughter duo, the daughter was in middle school when she had this idea. And so I just wanted to give a, you know, a shout out to Nikia and Neamami, Mia Mommy? Neamami? Anyhow, wonderful mother-daughter duo. And also our staff from Business Engagement, Workforce Development, Workforce Readiness, and that's just to name a few, I'm sure, I, I don't know, there, I, I can't name all the people that were involved in making that event a success. But we had representatives from colleges, universities, members of, of the business sector in and around Long Beach, and they were instructed to provide interactive activities for people. So as you walked around the Long Beach Arena, there were fun things to be involved with. And then each, each vendor or representative was able to tell the students about, not just the obvious things, like, for example, with CHP, the obvious thing is we see CHP people, you know, officers on the road, but all the other jobs that are involved, you know, accident investigations, dispatch, that type of thing. So, so as the students engage and, and talk to these people, they're learning about all kinds of different opportunities. So really wonderful event, really well-attended. I, I believe we bust students in from schools, and I don't know how many people were there, but very fun. And then, and then lastly, I attended the Women in Trade Event at the Hotel Maya. Also, Member Miller, you forgot to mention that one too. Mr. Miller was at a lot of these events, and, and I, I believe you saw the impact, the, they had a panel of guest speakers, five women of color who each had an individual story of immigration. And they, they spoke about their own experience, and no two stories were the same. And so the, the message there was there's, there's no one path to success. There are many, many pathways to success, and it was very inspirational. And the, for me, two of the big takeaways were, number one, there's power in education, and then number two, if there isn't a seat at the table, pull up a chair. And these women have, have blazed a trail, and I, I thought they were wonderful. It's an event I look forward to every year because it's so well-done. And now we will move to the superintendent report.
Thank you. I will continue, a few celebrations, and then I'm going to go to our website to share a couple of resources for families. So the first is want to congratulate, congratulate Annalise Bohorkes, who was a candidate for Student Board Member with the California State Board of Education from our Poly High School. She was not selected, but she reached the top tier of candidates for Student Board Members. So just wonderful that her leadership has gone far beyond Long Beach Unified. Want to thank our school psychologists, this is School Psychologists Week, thank them for the work that they do to care for students, to support teachers, and to provide many different supports at our, at our schools. And then also, this is Elementary Parent Caregiver Conference Week, and just appreciating families who are in, meeting with teachers and other support staff to ensure the best success for their students. And just a, a wonderful week in our schools when parents get to communicate directly with their, their children's teachers and to hear about progress and how to work together on behalf of their student. And then so to our website, at this time, when many of our families have been negatively impacted by the delay of SNAP benefits, our communication team has put together a set of resources and directions for families to use that are accessible right on the front page of the website, that provides local, in addition to our schools, local resources for families who are experiencing food insecurity because of the delay of SNAP benefits. So please, as school, as, for our schools and for others in the community, please share these resources with families. And then lastly, to our website, on our budget page, we have the launch of an attendance tracker that is accessible to every family, every staff member by school. We can look at our attendance rates for the last five days. So just to thank you for showing that, you can see how to get to a specific school's information. Our attendance campaign, You Belong, is to ensure that at least 95% of our students are attending daily, we hope for 100%, and our schools are encouraging classrooms at 100%, unless a student, of course, is ill. But you do belong to our students and to our families, and this is a, a means for us to reconnect and encourage and request that every student come to school where learning is happening in the classrooms and where our staff is working very hard to meet the board's goals. And being in school is a really significant aspect of meeting those goals. So you do belong, our attendance campaign is live. There will be an additional budget update that goes out to families next week that will be posted on that website. But for now, just want to remind or let the public know that that attendance tracker is there, as well as some additional resources. And that's my report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the business of tonight's meeting. Thank you, everyone, for attending. Our next regularly scheduled meeting is Wednesday, November 19th, and without objection, we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everyone.